John? Good evening. The San Dimas City Council and Housing Authority meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, will come to order. Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go right into presentations. We have an annual report by the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce, Sylvia Melendez.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We're going to be going through the agenda. Okay, so we're going to be doing a little introduction, mission statement, core values, chamber master. We're going to go through some data and partnerships and forecasting, and then how to contact us. So again, my name is Sylvia Melendez. I'm the CEO of the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce. Next to me is Dominic Torres from High Point Brewing. He's the board chair. And then Vice Chair, Mike Wallace from Better Home Financial. And then Ambassador Chair, Sandy Martinez. Okay, the mission of the San Dimas Chamber is to foster and promote the growth of business and business professional community while enhancing the quality of life in San Dimas. The San Dimas Chamber is comprised of local business owners and people who have banded together to advance the town's commercial and civil interests. The Chamber was created in 1913 and is run by a volunteer board of directors. The organization's backbone is the Board of Directors committees, which take on the work that guides the organization beyond the day-to-day activities of the Chamber personnel. Everything we do within the Chamber is, it goes within the core values. As the San Dimas Resource Center, we're committed to the following: creating a strong local economy, providing networking opportunities, promoting the community, representing interests with business and government, providing marketing opportunities with business tools for success. Now I'll turn it over to Dominic Torres.
All right, well, we're out the gate. Thank you, folks, for your time. What we're looking to do is create a strong local economy. The Chamber strives to contribute to the development of like a robust local economy through strong networks in the public, social sectors and commercial. The networks and leaders who manage invest to maximize their economic, social, and environmental benefits. Providing these networking opportunities in the city of San Dimas Chamber, the Chamber offers 61 events a year and ensuring regular chances to create, grow, and develop your network, resources, and community for the business. Monthly coffee hours, we have informative monthly luncheons, and after-hours mixers are all arranged at various times and days of the month to optimize the availability of our activities for the community and all of our entrepreneurs in the city. Our events are also strategically held at different locations to help market and spotlight business to maximize marketing and foot traffic to locations. Our events provide educational, we have marketing and community opportunities to expand networks, commerce, and support systems. What we like to look at is how we can promote the different parts of the community. So we promote through that in several different ways. So in our weekly newsletter, our website, which has been updated in April, our Chamber Master platform, which Sylvia will be highlighting later, our Chamber and Community Events, our sponsorship and partnerships, volunteers based, and community input, one of which is our formal ambassadors groups, which has been going on and being absolutely fantastic. With that said, I don't like to waste anyone's time, so with that, we're going to jump right into Sandra Martinez, our Ambassador Chair, who is going to speak briefly to you about our ambassador program.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here this evening to discuss the positive impact of our Chamber of Commerce's newly implemented Ambassador Committee structure. Over the past year, we've streamlined the Ambassador Committee efforts by creating a comprehensive operations manual. This manual clarifies the purpose and function of each committee, ensuring clear communication and focused efforts. Here are some key benefits. Our Management Committee. This dedicated group oversees all committees, facilitates monthly meetings, and assists with onboarding new members and identifying the qualities of a member in good standing. They also manage conflict resolution, and this year will launch an ambassador training program. Our Recruitment Committee. This group focuses on attracting new members and ambassadors. They manage applications, onboarding, trading, and then develop incentive programs to keep our ambassador network strong. The Legislative Committee. This group identifies topics relevant to our members and secures qualified speakers for chamber-hosted events. This committee serves as a valuable bridge between the Chamber and the community. And finally, our Social Committee. This enthusiastic group manages the logistics behind our events. They secure volunteers, maintain member welcome packages, source Chamber swag, and manage food, beverage, and raffle prizes for all chamber-hosted events. The creation and implementation of this strategic committee structure has fostered a more efficient and impactful ambassador committee. We're now better equipped to serve our members, attract new businesses, and contribute positively to the city's economic well-being. We're extremely proud of the men and women in our committee who guide members through their membership and ensure that they understand the full scope of offerings our Chamber provides and get identifiable value from their membership. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mike.
Evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the Chamber of Commerce. So what we're really doing is representing the interests of business as they relate to government. The San Dimas Chamber of Commerce aims to represent and partner with many agencies in order to assist the business community with legislative issues, training, and education. The Chamber extends its reach through collaboration and partnerships, which ensures that members have many opportunities to network and promote their businesses and services to a larger audience. These partnerships were particularly resourceful and important throughout the COVID pandemic restrictions, which were really changing dynamically each day, each month, of how businesses could operate. And the Chamber was a remarkable resource for businesses of knowing what was required of them to be able to operate. Some of these resources and collaborations include the following: our Governance Committee, San Gabriel Valley Legislative Coalition of Chambers, partnering with city, county, state, and state legislative representatives, information updates on relevant legislation and business issues, giving access to city, state, and federal government issues, our neighboring Chamber partners, and the Small Business Development Center, and SBA, particularly through the University of Laverne. And I'm going to turn it over to Sylvia.
So we wanted to briefly highlight what providing marketing opportunities and business tools for success, what we use. Our platform, it's called Chamber Master, and it's a tool that is very dynamic, and we include it in everybody's membership. So the platform is a very cost-effective marketing tool with 24-hour accessibility. It has a ton of capabilities. It assists with SEOs and expands the members' reach. So as I had mentioned, every member receives this platform automatically when they join. It's personalized. If, say that the member comes in and they want one-on-one training, we do provide that. And we also help, as soon as they join, they receive access to it. Through that platform, it has vast capabilities. You're able to post jobs. You could put press releases. You could do a spotlight on a business. You could add flyers. You could add email buzz, schedule ribbon cutting for additional marketing. You could have your directory. You could add hot deals, which it's our version of a Groupon. You could have a member-exclusive Groupon, so if you just want to work with the membership, you could have exclusive deals for that. You could add your events on our calendar. You could request for proposals. You could add website ads and automatically receive. And we automatically provide the max capability and receive staff assistance. The Chamber is the local Resource Center, and we receive roughly 3,000 requests annually, and that includes referrals, tourism, restaurant requests, business information, and general information. So as information is provided, our Chamber members and events are top priority, and it is a very powerful tool for their business. I wanted to show you what it actually looks like. So on the left-hand side is the landing page, and that's what the members look at, and then they're able to go through all the dropdown menus. On the right-hand side is the directory, and that's pretty much, they'll see every single member, and they're able to contact them. They're able to very much amplify their directory listing, and I'll show you that shortly. And you could RSVP to events. They could add their events, and so it really maximizes their reach. And one of the, so this is one of the Chamber members' directory listing, and I wanted to show, this is, definitely, they maximize their capabilities on there. They do directory, so their directory listing includes their hours of operation, their contact, their driving directions about them. They do hyperlinks. They're able to showcase their work and also do additional hyperlinks, which includes their contacts and much, much more. There's so much ability with Chamber Master. And that's something that the Chamber, we invest in that annually to maximize the potential for the Chamber members' reach to the community. Okay, now I'll turn it over to Mike Wallace, and he'll be talking about data partnerships and forecasting.
All right. So with relation to data partnerships and forecasting, our Chamber in the city of San Dimas, we have a substantial output and a high number of members compared to the neighboring chambers in the cities around us. We, our Chamber membership includes over 300 organizations, and we expect to be gaining, on average, 50 businesses annually. Members of the San Dimas Chamber represent a large spectrum, from small businesses, businesses with one to five employees, up to larger businesses, 50-plus employees, individuals, nonprofits, home-based businesses. We have associate members, and we have what we call lifetime members, who may be retired individuals who still want to be a part of the Chamber and share their business, knowledge, and enactment to serve the community. Our Chamber represents businesses across many industries, including healthcare, manufacturing, production, and wholesale, family, community, and civic organizations, restaurants, finance, insurance, government, and education, real estate, personal services, and many, many more. As Dominic said earlier, we have currently 61 events annually that we put on, and our programs include business and educational workshops, our partner programs, some of our partners, San Gabriel Valley Association of Chamber Executives, Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, and Southland Data Processing, who assists us with an annual employer update of any changing laws that are going to be required for employers to stay in compliance, as well as ADA compliance. We collaborate on many events with other organizations, businesses, and chambers, including San Dimas, the city of San Dimas, San Dimas Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles Fire Department, the Downtown Corridor Group, other multiple chambers in the surrounding area. We put on many networking events with partners. We do resource events, both for businesses and for job seekers, informational sessions, town halls, and business outreach, just to name a few. Our signature events, probably our biggest and best-known event is the San Dimas Beer and Wine Walk. We also do a career expo and job fair each year. We put on the Teacher of the Year Awards for our San Dimas schools, our Shop Local campaign. We host the State of the City. And we are also involved in the Benita Unified School District CTE program, and again, that is an abbreviated list. Once organizations join, sign up to become a partner with our supportive network and utilize us to help expand their reach. And with that, I will turn it over to Board Chairman Dominic Torres.
So with that, folks, to not waste any more time. You have to say, we do a lot. We're active. And if you're part of the Chamber, you can see how much we like to do, and we really like to maximize everything you folks do here. The Chamber of Commerce is expanding. We're increasing to look at more employees, programs, services. We want to update our system even more. Through partnerships, we like to strengthen our collaborations and expanding our volunteer base with, not just the volunteer portion of it, the ambassador program, and broadening our reach even further as we have into other cities, which is going wonderfully. The Chamber is proud to develop and support the growth of the commercial segment and the professional community, as well as simultaneously enhancing overall standard of life for those who live in San Dimas. As always, we always invite the community to connect with us and any business that can or wants to join the Chamber. If you follow us on any of our social medias, you'll always see we're active, our brand-new website that we just stood up, at sandimaschamber.org, or at one of our upcoming events. If there's anything else, thank you very much for you guys' times, and we appreciate it.
Anyone have any questions?
I just would make a comment. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. It doesn't go unnoticed, and each one of you, I know, has made significant contributions, I mean, in the past and now. And it's cool to see the energy the Chamber has, where you're at right now, and seeing this presentation. So keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, no. I would just echo what Councilman Vienna said. We're all very proud of you and the work you do. Thank you.
I just have one question. You went through that pretty fast, Dominic. The part I trained my ear to was it sounded like you guys are going to finally give Sylvia a little bit of help.
We always try, you know, but she constantly, it just keeps running forward and faster. So as we're trying to grab a hold of somebody, get him in there, you know, she's already way ahead of him. So we'll keep trying, though, to get someone in there and help her.
Okay, I think she needs it.
Absolutely.
She's great. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comments will not be taken during each individual item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, only once within three minutes. Do we have any speakers?
Mayor, the first speaker is Nora Chen with Library.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, manager, city staff, and everyone. My name is Nora Chen, and I'm the manager of the San Dimas Library. Summer is just around the corner, and our summer discovery program will start on June 1st. Kids and family, they can sign up online or just visit the library to pick up a game card. And the more books you get, you read, the more prize you will get and the more fun you will have. And we also plan a series of a performance show for the community. On June 13, the 3:00 p.m., we have a magic show, and on June 20, at the same time, 3:00 p.m., we have a pop show. And on June 27, also 3:00 p.m., we have a music show. And we also have a Smartypens Storytime on Fridays, June 7 and 14 at 10 a.m. for toddlers. In addition, the county have a community reading program called One Book, One County. So basically, all the county library, we will read the same book. The title, the feature book, is LA Weather by Maria Empara Escandón. So, and if you are interested, you can come to the library to check out the book, and our discussion for the book will be on June 1st at 11 a.m. Last, but not the least, the library provides more than just books, and we provide other more services, such as, we do have a computer for customers to use. Customer can print out the 10 pages for free for every day, and customer can purchase a tap card at the library, and you can get a free coffee test kits, and you can check out the state passes, or you can check out a hotspot from the library, all free. So to find out more information or service about the library, please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards for items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak to the Council this time? Ms. Green?
Good evenings, Mayor and City Council and all the staff. Thank you so much. I'm here representing the San Dimas Historical Society at 121 North San Dimas Avenue, the beautiful building owned by the city and the historical society. We have a great place there. We have a museum. We give out history. We have a wonderful gift shop. Thank you all so much. The historical society is there to save the history from the past, the present, for the future, and we try very hard to do that for the community. We also can give school tours anytime somebody asks us to. We give out scholarships for young folks that are working and, I mean, in school and come and volunteer for us. I would like to say we are open, the museum and gift shop and offices on Tuesday and Thursday. If you have questions, you want to look up some of the older homes that are in the historic district, that would be a good time to come, Tuesday and Thursday between noon and 3:00. We're also open on Friday and Saturday nights from 6 to 9. That's working with Vincenzo's Restaurant, and it's a great time to come and get a tour, go through our museum. I can tell you a lot about the history, so please come by and see us. Also, this special, every month, on the second Saturday, we're open for museum tours and a walking tour of the downtown historical part of San Dimas. That's, we're open from 10:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon. The tour will start at 10:00. That walks you around downtown, gives you history. If it's raining or if it's too hot for a tour outside, we'll tell you all about the house on the inside. That's always going to be on the second Saturday of every month, starting at 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And just remember our Friday, Saturday nights and our Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. Please come on by. It's a beautiful building, and we're so proud of it, and we're so proud of the history that we're helping save. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Council this time?
Pete Sluice. MetroLink had two more fatalities this past week, which is average. It's been averaging, it had 53 in the first six months, so it's about, most of those were strikes. Most of them were fatalities, but not all of them. Metro, obviously, I think everybody's seen it on the news, are focusing on crime now. They've come to the conclusion that 93% of all their crime is committed by non-ticketed passengers, and they've really made it a focus. The one thing we can still do as a city is, they still haven't started kicking people off at the end of the line. When trains come in, those are people that should not be on. You shouldn't make, just keep continuously on the train. They're still waiting for the Montclair extension funding, and now they say the end of June, so notification by July. And even without the funding, they've already started to try qualifying vendors, which will keep it somewhat on time. This reminded me of the California High Speed Rail. In 2008, they had $30 billion, as they said would have a rail that would finish by 2020, and now they're estimating $130 billion with no final date. Of course, the light rail is also similar. It was, when it was, the taxes were approved in 2008. It was supposed to be in Clermont by 2017 and cost under $1 billion. And now we're looking at probably something around 2031 and triple or quadruple the cost. I'd also like to mention that running a train is not cheap. Currently, only 4.2% of Metro's budget comes from Fairbox Recovery. They spend over $200 million on MetroLink. Additionally, some of that, most of that's for operating costs, and they have a $9 billion budget. MetroLink has $300 million of operating costs, roughly, and the 50 million of that is Fairbox Recovery or contributes towards that. Fairbox would be negative year over year, except the Student Adventure Pass has been added to the Fairbox Recovery, which brings me to the Bright Line, the highest-speed rail to Vegas. First, Bright Line is a privately-owned company and reported an operating loss of $192 million for the first nine months. This will be a two-hour, 10-minute This will be a two-hour, 10-minute trip from Rancho Cumanga. It ends about five miles short of the strip, twice as far as the airport. Cost is estimated to be $400 per person, that'd be the fare. I can't imagine families using this. It would be like $1,600 for a family of four and it really competes with flying. It's still not fully funded. They've gotten, the cost went from $8 billion two years ago, now they estimate $12 billion. $3 billion has been awarded by the administration and $3.5 billion on bonds. So they're about $5.5 billion short. Finally, in Rancho, at the current MetroLink station, they are going to build a seven-story parking garage, which will house up to 5,000 cars and each train will hold about 450 people. Thank you, guys.
400. All right. Anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak to the council this time? Okay, we'll move forward. The consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7 from the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on items 1 through 6 and 8.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion, just only if you would be so kind to read the proclamation under CC item number 1.
Well, I would, but I don't have it.
It's the first item on the consent there.
My thing says recognize mosquito.
That's the one. That's the one.
Okay.
I have to report back to all my colleagues at that board that we read this.
Do you have a copy of it?
I have to dig for it as well. You'd probably find it faster than me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. You want it all read?
Yes, sir.
Here all night long?
Yes, sir, yep.
Whereas the mosquitoes are, is considered the world's deadliest creature, infecting and killing more than 1 million people each year by spreading pathogens, pathogens to people when they are, when they're bite and when they're bit, okay? Whereas the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health concluded that the San Gabriel Communities accounted for 41% of LA County's West Nile virus human cases in 2023. And whereas the threat of invasive eighties mosquitoes is our communities increase the risk and the local outbreak of dengue fever, Zika, yellow fever, and holy cow, Chicka, Chikum, Chikacumanga. And whereas the city of San Dimas, in cooperation with the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, have been involved in protecting public health from mosquitoes-borne illnesses. There, now therefore, I am Mayor Emmett Bader, Mayor Pro Tem Ryan Vienna, council members Rachel Batakis, Eric Nekonel, and Eric Weber do hereby proclaim a week of June 16 through June 22, 2024, as a National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. In witness thereof, I, Emmett G. Bader, have here on set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this 28th day of May, 2024. I know I kinda chuckled, but this is an extremely serious matter and I do apologize for not having a copy of it handy at that point, but I do want to thank our representative to the mosquito abatement board, Ryan, who has to attend a meeting once a month at 7:00 in the morning. So I want to thank him and thank God we have these people who know what they're doing because there's just a lot of this type of, 41% represents a huge portion of this community. So, Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had the sudden itch for you to do that, so I really appreciate that. And with that, I will move approval of items 1 through 8 excluding number 7, which was pulled by Councilmember Nekonel.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 7 deals with the authorize, authorization of the city manager to enter into reimbursement agreements with Benidorm Unified School District. And as the members of the public know, the city and Benidorm Unified collaborate on a number of areas and we have several agreements in place. So for the benefit of the public, I thought that it would be prudent to have the city manager explain what this item is and a little bit more detail for members of the public to understand some of the transactions that take place between our organizations. So with that, Mr. City Manager, would you mind explaining what this is, why it's important providing additional detail for the audience today?
Thank you, Councilmember Nekonel. Thank you for highlighting the, quite a number of agreements that we have with Benidorm Unified School District, which I would relate as we have a good, strong partnership with the district in providing services to the public. In this case, we're talking about two aspects of those services. One is providing a school resource officer to the schools as well as the other providing a crossing guard at Extran Elementary. The goal here is the city currently provides and procures from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department through the county four special assignment deputies and one special assignment sergeant that provides special services throughout the city, which include combating quality-of-life crimes like homelessness, graffiti, abatement, upticks in burglaries, residential auto theft, and now with an enhanced capability, the ability to do traffic enforcement, which for all those that might be listening on the airwaves, there may or may not be a time when multiple deputies may be on the streets that will be conducting a full enforcement in the near future, so I would recommend that they slow down and follow the stop signs and stoplights. However, in this case, we've partnered with the district to provide that deputy during the course of the 180 days of instructions to those schools. Specifically, two of those schools is where predominantly the deputy stays, but the deputy does go to other areas. In return, the school district reimbursed the city for the cost of what it would be for them themselves to procure a school resource officer independently through the county. The benefit to the school district is that the school district avoids a more than $90,000 cost to procure a vehicle, which we've already procured and paid that cost and it's built into the cost, the maintenance cost is built into the cost of that deputy. So there is a savings to the district to get the same deputy. Additionally, a school resource officer is limited to 180 days and is paid overtime for time above and beyond that. A special assignment deputy is a very flexible position that can be used for any, for quite a number of different activities, both school resource and non-school resource, so we can flexibly use that deputy for a variety of needs, both in the city and at the schools. The second part of that, the city conducts periodic assessments of safety in the school zones and using state and federal guidelines determined if there's a warrant that requires an additional traffic or engineering need to protect students and pedestrians that may cross in those school zones into those schools. And in the latest assessments that were done, there was one school that was identified as a school that needed an enhancement that was Extran and that enhancement that was decided was to provide a crossing guard. The city does not have crossing guards that we have ourselves. We contract with the city of Laverne to provide our city crossing guards that we then provide at Extran Elementary School. And in return, the school district pays 50% of the cost of that school, of that crossing guard and we pay the other 50%, which I think minimizes the cost to provide that resource to those schools. And so these are just two of the partnerships that we have that I think are mutually beneficial to us and the district with a focus of protecting and serving the public and our community. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
Ken? The motion on item 7?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We'll adjourn the regular council meeting and open up the housing authority meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have a presentation for this item. I think the description is self-explanatory. The goal is to provide additional cameras at Charter Oaks Mobile Home Park and the installation of a microwave system that allows for the communication between those cameras as the facility does not have adequate bandwidth built into the ground through fiber. This project was bid in accordance or piggybacked in accordance with the Public Contracting Code and we ask for your authorization and approval to enter into the agreements with NetSync Network Solutions for the purchase and installation of equipment and cameras at Charter Oaks for a total of $66,877.39.
Any further, any questions?
I have one. Go ahead. What is the lifespan of these cameras in terms of life cycle and replacement and all of that?
I believe we purchased a five-year replacement. The way the cameras work are similar to the cameras at City Hall, so you pay a singular price for the purchase of the cameras that provides the service for the course of that five-year period.
Great.
And at the end of that five-year, we would replace those cameras.
And the cost would be similar than in five years, it'd be a recurring cost every five years?
Not all of this. Some of this cost is the actual microwave tower that's required to provide the communication.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval as proposed.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the housing authority meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any further questions? We'll adjourn the housing authority meeting and we'll reopen the city council meeting for public hearings and adopt the resolution 2024-34, setting a citywide landscape parcel tax for fiscal year 2024-25. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I was wondering if perhaps we could take item number 4 and 5 out of order up. It's a continuance from a previous council meeting and I think just out of respect for the parties involved, it might be helpful to disposition that sooner.
Any opposition? Mr. Forrest, you could sit down. Okay, we'll take item number 4. Okay, this is a discussion, consideration, and introduction of ordinance 1308 to approve zoning change 22-0001 and approve vesting tentative tract map 22-0001, general plan amendment 23-0001, development plan review board 22-0015, and tree removal permit 22-0029, project number 22-0051. Request to approve the subdivision of two existing parcels into seven new parcels to be developed with seven detached single-family homes and general plan designated, two parcels from single-family to very low, single-family low, change the zoning of two parcels from SFA 16 to SF 7500 and remove 11 mature protected trees and properties located at 327 East Baseline and unaddressed parcels and amend commercials to single-family low and change the zoning designation of 17 parcels from SFA 16,000 to SF 7500 for the properties located at 1102, 1108, 1114, 1120, 1126, 1132, and 1136 Cherokee Court, 315 East Baseline Road and unaddressed parcel, 245 East Baseline Road. Initial study mitigated negative declaration continued from May 14, 2024, the last city council meeting. And it sounds like I just repeated myself from two weeks ago. Okay, staff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You are correct. This item was continued from the May 14 city council meeting. Essentially, this project allows the subdivision of two parcels to create seven parcels and seven single-family units and also rezones 17 additional parcels to create consistency and to clean up some inconsistencies with the general plan. Staff did go through the presentation at the last city council meeting. Would be happy to go through that if the council desires or we could simply get into the discussion.
We're not gonna have a public hearing. The public hearing was closed last two weeks ago, so we'll move forward.
Mayor, could I add something on to the staff report, please?
Sir?
I have a recommendation on this item and it's due to a letter that we received on the next item, the Allen Cataract Project, but I'll explain that in a second. I'll explain what my recommendation on this item is first and then explain why. I'm recommending that we split up this discussion and decision into two different decisions. One being the two parcels along Cherokee Court that are owned by the applicant, the decision whether to approve all the approvals for those two parcels and the rezone of those two parcels will be one decision for the council tonight. And the council can either decide to approve or deny those tonight. And then the second decision for the council tonight will be the rezoning of all the other 17 parcels. And if the council is inclined to approve those rezonings tonight, I'm recommending that that be, that decision be continued to the next council meeting. If the council is inclined to deny all those rezonings for the other 17 parcels, then that decision can be made tonight. The reason that I'm making this recommendation is, like I said, because of a letter that we received from a law firm on the next item, the Allen Cataract Project. Law firm's name is Lozu, Lozo Drury. It is a very lengthy letter objecting to the environmental analysis that the staff's consultant performed on that next item. And so because of this letter, I was going to recommend that if the council was inclined to approve the next item, we continue it to the next meeting. The next item has a symbiotic relationship with the 17 rezoning parcels on this item. They both have to be considered at the same council meeting. So if we're gonna continue the next item for two weeks, we need to continue the 17 parcel rezonings for two weeks as well. So that's why I'm recommending on the two parcels owned by the applicant tonight, council can decide to approve or deny those tonight. On the decision about the 17 rezonings, if you're inclined to approve those, I'd ask that you continue them to the next meeting to approve. If you're inclined to deny them, you can deny them tonight. So I can answer questions about that if anyone has any.
Jeff, just for clarity, the applicant's project, his original application, the way I understand it, was two parcels, seven homes. That's it. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case.
That is correct.
Can I affirm that?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Council's appetite, what they would like to do?
Mayor, I would just like to say, number one, thank you to the council for indulging me on the research quest as it related to this public hearing and continuing this item. Thank you to staff for looking into that item and finding out what happened and proving I'm not crazy. So with that being said, I appreciate the time and the effort that the staff put into realizing what happened. And for those that didn't have the opportunity to attend the previous study session, the Cliff Notes version is later on, after this project was approved by the council, then later on, a year later, there was a few things that happened, the landscape of law change with SB 9, the council looked at another project a little bit down the way, and the gist of it is the council made some comments related to equestrian zoning and so forth. And so out of the last meeting, the last study session that preceded this meeting, the council has directed staff to establish a resolution that takes a formal position and the council will consider it an upcoming meeting on prioritizing equestrian property use and preserving that use within the city on properties that are currently zoned equestrian as well as not infringing on others' ability to horsekeep. With all that being said, I wanted to say to council and to staff at this point, you know, my preference after reviewing the last couple meetings and the public testimony and so forth, I am very comfortable in moving forward with only the two parcels, the seven properties specifically as it relates to the project that's been proposed with an ask to the applicant that they make efforts to be able to preserve any infringement on horsekeeping on adjacent property as much as they can. But I am not inclined to support the zone change of the 17 other parcels that were identified through this. I think that that abuts to the conversation we just had preceding this in the study session and I think that at this time, until we've resolved that... And I think that at this time, until we've resolved that, that that matter should not move forward, in my opinion.
Any further comments?
I think that makes sense, especially in light of what the city attorney just brought to our attention.
So I would then move that we approve the project with adopting a resolution, I guess, modified. Is that how this would work, or legal?
You can make your motion for what you want to do, and then include in that a direction to staff to bring back revised resolutions at the next meeting for the consent calendar adoption.
Would you like to restate that in a way that sounds like a motion?
Based on what you said, I believe your motion would be to approve the, all of the entitlements and the zoning changes for the two parcels along Cherokee Court, and not approve the rezonings of the other 17 parcels that are part of this item, and direct staff to bring back appropriate resolutions to reflect that for the consent calendar at the next meeting.
And to work with the applicant to ensure that we work to address equestrian use on the adjacent property. I think there's only one, and as much as possible.
Yes, sir.
That's my motion.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0.
Then, thanks, mayor. Did you want to move on to item five now? Because I have something to say about that one, too.
Right. Okay. Item five, adopt resolution 2024-27 and introduce ordinance 1306 approving the following related applications with a mitigated, mediate, negative declaration for development of a 63,749 square foot warehouse office, multi-tenant building on 2.58 acres site located on the northwest corner of Cataract and Allen Avenue, 309 West Allen Avenue, 917 North Cataract, and 929 North Cataract Avenue. This item was continued from May 14, 2024. Staff? Jeff, do you need to speak now?
Yes. Thank you, mayor. Because of the action that the council just took, which was to deny or to not approve the rezoning of the 17 other parcels for item four, that actually means that the council cannot approve item number five tonight, because in order for item number five to be approved, some rezonings of other parcels in the city have to occur. The reason is because item number five is reducing residential capacity on some parcels right now, and the new state law says that if we're reducing residential capacity on parcels, we have to make up for that by increasing residential capacity on other parcels. That was the intent of the rezoning of the 17 parcels in item three, I mean, in item four, I'm sorry, and that has to be done at the same meeting. So because those 17 rezonings were not approved on item four, that means item five cannot be approved tonight, and that means that the item number five would need to be continued to a date uncertain when we can bring back another set of parcels for council to consider increasing residential capacity on at the same meeting, so that item number five can be considered and possibly approved. So basically, the summary of that is item number five needs to be continued to a date uncertain.
So moved.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. We will move on to oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, if we can go back to public hearings, number one, two, and three. We took four and five out of order.
Oh. Always trying to get us out here early.
Good try.
All right, well, Mr. Forrest, you're back? Okay. This is, adopt a resolution 2024, setting the citywide landscape parcel tax for fiscal year 2024-25. Parks and Rec? Mike?
Can you hear me now? In 1997, voters approved ordinance 1086, adopting a special parcel tax to be levied against properties in the city. The revenues collected are exclusively used to improve and maintain public parks, parkways, medians, and trees. Citywide landscape parcel tax revenues and expenditures are reflected in fund date of the city budget. Expected expenditures and fund date for the fiscal year 24-25 were $1,199,517. The expenditures include costs for citywide contract landscape and tree maintenance services, utilities, and landscaping irrigation equipment. Any costs not covered by the landscape parcel tax would need to be subsidized by the general fund. Ordinance 1086 requires that commencing with fiscal year 1999-2000, the special tax shall be set annually by the city council following a public hearing. The rate of the tax as established by ordinance 1086 can be adjusted annually to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index by an amount equal to the increase in CPI for the period extending from April 1st of the previous year to March 31st of the current year. That number was 4% for this year. Staff requests that the city council review two options for the citywide landscape parcel tax for 24-25. Option one is to adjust the tax by increasing the rate to reflect the change in the CPI of 4%. The revenue option for one is projected at $1,55,600, reflecting an increase of $40,600 in the fund. Fund date would still continue to run at a deficit of $116,000. Option two is to maintain the landscape parcel tax at the current rate with no increase. The current rate for that would be $1,015,000 with that scenario, and fund date would have a deficit of $157,517. Staff recommends the required public hearing approving adoption, adopting resolution 2024-34, which would approve the increase of 4% for landscape parcel tax.
Any questions? At this time, I'll open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'd like to hit that thing. Counsel?
John usually would traditionally move the approval of an increase on tax, just so we're all clear. So I'll hang out for a minute.
Well, I'll just say that even though it's an increase in landscape parcel tax, and some of us may not like that, including myself, in light of the budget discussions that we've been having lately and the robustness of those conversations and the desire to protect the financial stability of the city, I'll be the one to move approval of resolution 2024-34.
So you have the motions, first made mode, and second by Mr., yeah, Mr. Vienna. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Just got a phone call from John. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing number two. We're having too much fun here tonight. Sir? Still here. I was going to let you read it. No. Adopt resolution 2024-36, confirming the assessment of open space maintenance district number one, annexation number three, tract map 32-841 Northwoods. Parks?
On April 9, 2024, the city council adopted resolution 2024-21, approving the engine's report and declaring its intention to levy and collect an assessment for fiscal year 2024 on open space maintenance district one, the Northwoods Assessment District. The engine's report was prepared with a scope for work to include general landscape maintenance, tree trimming, water, and electricity on a quarterly basis. No increases proposed in the assessment rate. The 2023-24 assessment rate was $898.42 per parcel, and the rate proposed for 24-25 will remain at that number. The funds collected from the assessment are used to offset costs incurred for maintenance in the Northwoods Assessment District. The assessment district was created without an allowance for an annual Consumer Price Index increase or other rate of adjustment outside of the allowance per government code section 53753, which requires a vote from the properties within the district. That occurred last year. We proposed a three-year increase, and it was overwhelmingly voted down. At this time, the fund balance for the Northwoods Assessment District is negative, and the engine's report does not call for an increase. Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing on the assessment district and adopt a resolution 2024-36, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 24-25, open space maintenance district one with no increase.
We'll open a public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
I do have a question. I recall this whole exercise last year in going through this, and I thought we were adjusting services behind what they elected. Did we do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we tapered things down, I suppose.
We're contractually obligated for quarterly landscape maintenance, which we do through our contractor, Neves. Wherever reduced was in tree maintenance services and irrigation services. We actually got lucky this past year because we had a very wet winter, so the irrigation system was turned off for roughly four and a half months. We have a, use a spark controller system that reacts to weather, so we can actually dial it back and maintain the health of the plants without exceeding our water budget.
Awesome. That's all I had. I would move approval as proposed. Oh, sorry.
You did mention that it benefited from a wet winter, so what exactly was the impact now that the services have been scaled back? Did you see minimal or no impact because of the weather, or was there some?
Right now, we're ahead on our budget, but we still have another 30 days left, and it was 85 degrees today, and we're looking at heat for the next four weeks. So our goal is to keep everything alive and get to the next fiscal year. The toughest part of our project up there is the summer months.
Right. And so I think that's what I was getting at, is because the wet winter provided a difference in the forecast, do you envision an increase might be necessary to maintain things, given that we could have a very hot summer, and this may have an impact on accelerating the burn of the budget?
Our budget proposal for Northwoods was submitted with no general fund in addition to this fund. We will manage that area on the assessment funds.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? We have a first and second. All in favor?
Do we have a second?
No, and I withdrew it, so I'll move adopt resolution 2024-36 for this item.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution passed 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to item three, adopt resolution 2024-37. Option one is confirming the assessment of open space maintenance district number one, tract 32-818 Boulevard, with an increase for Consumer Price Index in the amount of 3/4 of 1% or $20.50 per parcel. Parks?
Last one. On April 9, 2024, the city council adopted resolution 2024-20, approving the engine's report and declaring its intention to levy and collect an assessment for the fiscal year 24-25, open space maintenance district number one, which is the Boulevard Assessment District. This is a pesado laundry. The engine's report was prepared with a scope of work to include general landscape maintenance, tree trimming, water, and electricity on a quarterly basis, with an assessment increase of 3.4 reflected of the changes in the CPI. The 23-24 assessment rate was $602.91 per parcel. The change in the CPI from February 2023 to February 2024 was 3.4%. This has a different CPI period than the landscape parcel tax by one month, so there's a 0.6 differential. The recommended authorized assessment rate for fiscal year 24-25 is increased by 3.4% or $20.50 per parcel, which equates to an annual assessment rate of $623.41 per parcel. Staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing at proposed assessment rate for open space maintenance district one, Boulevard, and adopt resolution 2024-37, confirming the diagram and assessment with an increase of 3.4% for fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll open a public hearing? We'll close a public hearing? Do you have a motion?
Move approval of adoption of resolution 2024-37.
One second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Would you guys like to redo item four and item five?
No, thanks.
Oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not, mayor.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close oral communications. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one update. I think over the past few weeks, most in our community have seen how hard our city has been hit with graffiti, especially down the downtown core, the Arrow Highway, around the commercial corridor. I've also heard of additional graffiti being hit at Extran, Ramona School, and in Laverne, and it seems that there's a tit-for-tat going with folks from Laverne and in San Dimas. We've been working with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department in terms of how to best combat the issue. The Sheriff's Department has previously been pretty successful when we've had an uptick in graffiti of tracking down and identifying the potential sources of that, and their actions have several times over the last three years led to a dramatic drop in that graffiti. It's always not that simple to be able to identify these individuals or potential individuals or encourage folks to not do this, and it's getting harder and harder, and apparently now it's a little worse as it's crossing two city boundaries. And so the Sheriff's Department does understand this is a priority. They are working in partnership with the city of Laverne, Laverne School Resource Officers, and the schools, Benita Unified Schools on both sides of our city and Laverne. We also are fortunate that we have received a $200,000 grant that the city accepted at its last meeting to be focused on leveraging technology in combating crime and quality-of-life crimes and enhancing the capabilities of our deputies. Part of the efforts of what we're going to do will involve expending some of those resources for issues that are ongoing, such as this. I don't want to go into detail about the methods and what we're going to do, but since it is a priority, we are going to commit those resources to do so. I also want to highlight an individual who happens to be in the audience, Ms. Margie Green. If you notice, typically when we get hit with graffiti, you'll see a white or brown wall, it's a singular color that gets hit, that is pretty easy for urban graffiti or contractor to come in and clean up, and they, and urban graffiti does a remarkable job. They're very timely, very quick. They're connected to our MySanDimas system, so they're able to get these requests fast. However, when somebody tags something that is not a singular color or has a design on it, like the wagon was tagged over the course of the last two weeks, it's much more difficult to go in and clean that up since it's a very talent, it takes a required talent to be able to do so. And I must point out that Margie Green, a member of our community, did a fantastic job to jump in and assist the city and be able to bring that wagon back to its present luster. And so you would have seen a canopy put over that, and now we're able to enjoy the San Dimas sign once again. But we hope that in short order, we'll be able to stem the flow of this again. We are seeing the continued break-ins that we have, the burglaries that you're seeing across the region. That's another area of focus for this grant that we're looking at, is to help businesses and residential neighborhoods with that problem. We also are looking to residents that have stepped up with their homeowners association to be a part of the solution. We've had a number of different community meetings led by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department with a high number of attendance of residents that are very interested in what they can do to assist us, and just know that this is one of our top priorities, and we continue to focus on it in every way we can. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. City attorney?
I have no reports, mayor.
Thank you. Members of the city council, council members report on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB 1234.
Mr. Mayor, I attended the California Contract Cities Association conference, wherein I attended many sessions that were relevant to our community, the region, and various aspects influencing or impacting our community, as well as many enrichment sessions with my fellow council members. And so those were, that's my report. Thank you.
I was also at the Contract Cities Conference. I want to thank the city for spending those resources to send us there to learn and to take in all of the wonderful to send us there to learn and to take in all of the wonderful ideas and network with all of these people who are very inspiring. One lesson that I was very inspired by is Norwalk's youth program. So I think we've got some really fun things that we can start developing here for our teen youth, and it's because I went and I learned at the conference, so thank you.
I was also at the Contract Cities Conference, and I would say the main takeaway that I got out of that wasn't necessarily, it had a little bit to do with a forum involving very sheriffs from around the region, but a lot of offline conversations with with members of the Sheriff's Department about potential lawsuits that may affect our sheriff's contract. It was very valuable and insightful as to what may be affecting our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the same conference and concur with my colleagues in terms of the sessions attended, since we attended the same schedule.
I too attended the conference, and one thing that should be noted that one of the conference's classes that we all as a council had to attend was an ethics class on AB 1234, which is required by the state every other year. We all attended it. It's very interesting, long two hours, but very interesting. Okay, and it's probably, if we take anything away from any of these classes, this has got to be the thing that we all need to remember within ourselves, that without ethics, we're nothing. So bottom line to it is, I was glad to see everybody attentive, was attentive there and paid attention. And, you know, it happens every other year, but then there's also another section on the off-year that deals with sexual harassment. Harassment, excuse me, harassment. All right, so, but these are some of the things that we actually go to, we have to attend. And it's fortunate that if we didn't attend it there, we'd have to have the city attorney do it, and his rates are a lot more expensive. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to members of the council request for future, further items, future items and comments. Ryan?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request one item for discussion with the council. Members of the Planning Committee had approached me regarding the, excuse me, regarding the Planning Committee. As you know, when we had budget discussions and gave guidance to city staff, that was one of the items that we recommended potentially eliminating. However, members of the commission informed me that attending that conference was extremely valuable and is an investment worthy of the council's attention. It helps them be better commissioners, helps them make better decisions. It helps them understand the different dynamics at play, build relationships, et cetera. So with your permission, I'd like to add that item to a future city council agenda for us to consider and make a recommendation as to whether we want to stick by our original recommendation for eliminating that funding or restoring it per the commission's wishes. And I would also invite members of the commission to, at that meeting, weigh in during public comment, so they can inform council themselves as to what they informed me.
Thank you. Are you planning on coming back to the council before you present the budget?
We were planning on coming back at the next meeting to present the actual budget itself, so what we could do is still have that conversation, do we add that item back? It's a $9,500 item, and we can consider it there and as we're considering the budget.
All right, any objections to that? Discussing at that time?
I presume there's at least two of you that want to have that conversation.
Yeah, I too am interested in that, and I'm actually, I'm not opposed to the discussion and even open to a mid-year budget adjustment as well. So either way, I'm easy on this issue.
Mr. Weber?
Oh, it's my turn. Chris kind of stole my thunder. I was going to talk a little bit about graffiti, but I could skip over the majority of it. Part of what I wanted to touch on, again, is to thank Margie. Thank you so much for all of the work that you do. Everybody knows that you're all over the community doing good things that benefit everyone. But when it comes to graffiti abatement, it's something that we take very seriously, and I think our contractor does a fantastic job and jumps on these things quickly. But like Chris pointed out, that particular graffiti location posed a lot of challenges, and it is the gateway into our city and is a representation of what our city stands for. And it was very heartwarming to see that you volunteered your time to go out and remediate that and get it back to its original condition. So thank you so much for that, and it really does, it doesn't go unnoticed. And then I posted a little bit about graffiti, since it was quite the topic on the San Dimas buzz on Facebook, and kind of touched on the same things that Chris talked about as far as the uptick in graffiti. It's real, we've seen it, we're aware of it, and we're working with our Sheriff's Department and through various channels to try to combat that however we can. But somebody posed the question, what happened to our city? Now that we have graffiti, homeless, and streets that are deteriorated and are a hazard, are we electing the right people to represent us? I think in many instances that have to do directly with those particular issues and how they affect our community, no, we're not electing the right people. And I'm not saying that anyone on this council is remiss in their duties. I think we do a really good job, and I think in the past, this council has even taken a lot of flak for being very public safety-minded, to say the least. But there are political offices that have very direct correlations with their decision-making on our city, including, obviously, we know state and county levels, but also our elected judges. And I just want to point out that it is extremely important to know who you're electing when you cast your vote for a judge. You know, it's something that I think a lot of people just gloss right over. They find a name that resonates with them, they fill in the bubble, and then they move on. But a lot of the court cases that have come down and forced the city's hand to go along with certain agendas, you know, homelessness being one big example, were pushed down from the courts. So just know who you're voting for, and don't discount the importance of voting for the right judges. Do your research, so thank you.
Thank you. Just to hit on the one topic of Margie Green. Margie Green, oh.
Can I add something in? I did a vigorous nod when I looked after Councilmember Vienna spoke, because I thought maybe you thought that was my pass, but it was just a.
No, it wasn't.
I was just in such agreeance.
When I thought about it, I thought about what you were talking about, the youth program, and I thought she had already spoke. Sorry.
I won't take too long. I just wanted to thank our San Dimas heroes. The volunteers were out this weekend, or yesterday. It was Memorial Day. They were at San Dimas Veterans Monument at Freedom Park. It was wonderful to go and see those volunteers, and it was beautiful what they did. They had a beautiful wreath and flowers out, so I just want to thank our heroes volunteers. And then I wanted to highlight that May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's during this time that we reflect and celebrate the important role that Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders have played in our shared history. And I just wanted to recognize those members of our community and thank them. And that is it, short and sweet. I thought you were doing a nod like I did.
Thank you, and I apologize. Back to Margie Green. Margie, I was driving down the street, and I looked over at the wagon, because I wanted to see the graffiti that I had been told about. And there Margie was, with her easel in hand and painting away. And so I decided to stop. So I stopped, I pulled over by the KFC, and then I started taking pictures. And it took about the fifth or sixth picture before Margie Green noticed that anybody was taking pictures of her. She was so wrapped up in that paint, figuring out if it was going to be white paint, or blue paint, or brown paint, or whatever. But when I finally got her to look over at me, she was very startled. She was doing a great job. She does things that many people in this community don't have a clue. But Margie, thank you very much from everybody sitting up here. We appreciate it. And she's very shy, so. But I read a lot of good things, a lot of things on the buzz about her. She, somebody sent me a text and said, you realize there's like 130 comments being made about this, about Margie making this, but thank you again, Margie. Last week, I attended the historical dinner. It's an annual dinner, a semi-annual dinner that the Historical Society has for their membership, and they had about 75, 80 members of their organization to discuss what San Dimas was like. And we got an opportunity to see what San Dimas was like, not only by train, but by air. Dave Harbin found some very old film footage that he showed, and it told a whole different aspect of San Dimas as we know it from walking down the street. We see the train station, but we didn't see it ever functional. And he had pictures of that video, and it was a pretty neat situation. Thank you very much. This afternoon, right prior to coming to the council meeting, I had an opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting for a new business here in town, Alkanini RX Anesthetics. It's at 168 Bonita. So if you need Botox, I think that's the place you go. But she would.
When's your appointment, Mr. Mayor?
She tried to get me in the chair, but I said I had a council meeting, I had to go. So, long story short. But the other thing is, yesterday, I too attended the Heroes Monument and spoke to the volunteers that were working there, and they related a little story to me that while they were there, five individuals from around the community, meaning mostly in, like, Upland, came running up carrying an American flag, and they were making a tour of the monuments in the local area. So five of them, and they called themselves the Inspired Runners. And they were very inspiring, according to the women that were there at the monument, said that they took pictures and they left there heading for either Laverne or back to Glendora or over to back to Upland. But that's a pretty healthy run, and they were, they said they were fired up in support of the Heroes and Heroes Monument, as well as, you know, the veterans and memorials. So I think that we all should recognize that this community is a place that people recognize as caring about those of our fallen and our people that fight and save this country. So thank you very much to them for at least recognizing us and coming to our city. Okay, that's really about all I have. Does anybody have any problem with adjourning this meeting into a special session?
I think we have a closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, there's the closed session statement.
Okay, we'll close this session for 10 minutes.
We will now go into closed session to discuss one case of conference with legal counsel existing litigation, and one case of conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation.
Anybody want to adjourn?
Yep.